Nothing big and controversial apparently.
Two more minutes. Can't believe how dark it is out.
Uh huh.
So dark out. Howdy, would you rather have it be late, more late in the evening or in the morning? In the evening, that's me too.
Yeah, same thing. It's hard to finish stuff, isn't it?
Yeah. Gotta get up earlier.
Yeah. I'm getting terrible about that, it's dark, it's dark.
But it's awful in like three thirty, you can see it start to turn a little bit, it's awful. Alright, I've got five o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, roll call, we have selectman Helley Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kevin Bopp, myself Jamie Thurlow, town clerk Sarah Abbott, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Uh, McKenzie has called me and said she will not be making it tonight.
Make a motion to excuse McKenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse McKenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, we have approval of minutes, minutes from October sixteenth.
Hi, I'm motion to approve the minutes from October sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I understand.
Okay, Eric, please. Um, approval of warrants. We have warrant thirty-three for twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, thirty-four for one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents, thirty-five for twelve thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and forty-six cents, thirty-six for twenty thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and three cents, thirty-seven for thirteen thousand three hundred two dollars and forty-one cents, thirty-eight for six thousand five hundred fifty dollars and fifty cents, thirty-nine for five thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents, uh, forty for twelve thousand ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, forty-one for sixty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and zero cents, uh, forty-two for thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars, and warrant forty-three for seven thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants thirty-three through forty-three?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve warrants thirty-three through forty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have financial reports.
So these reports are as of, as of October thirty-first, which is thirty-four percent of the way through fiscal year. Um, some highlights on the revenue side, in October, we collected one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars in property taxes, bringing total collections for the year to ninety-one point six percent. Uh, we collected forty-five thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars in mortgage vehicle excess tax, resulting in total collections of forty point one six percent of what was budgeted. Uh, in the war fund, we received six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in use fees and a thousand dollars in allowance rent. In Harbor, we received two hundred and twenty in mortgage fees, and in the civil fund, we received eight hundred dollars in use fees. On the expense side, the administration cost centers running under budget at twenty-nine point one six percent. In October, we had additional expenses of sixteen hundred twenty-nine dollars for the firearm, five hundred eighty-five dollars for repairs and maintenance, and fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars for resiliency, um, planning, which is covered by the, um, CRP grant. In public works, we are under budget at twenty-two point four-two percent. In October, some notable costs include twelve hundred and seven in repairs, eight hundred and sixty-one in colors and signs, thousand eighty for Cape Road, two thousand dollars for roadside building, thousand twenty-two in plant sanding parts, twenty-six hundred and thirty-seven for road salt, and twenty-five oh four in summer gas and diesel. In the war fund, we paid twenty thousand four hundred thirty-four for the war debt, and this was the final payment on that project. Um, so there's no debt services remaining for the next fiscal budget. Uh, we also had expenses of seven hundred and twenty-five in float repair. On the general ledger side, we received eighteen thousand four hundred twenty-one in revenue sharing from the state in October, bringing total receipts for FY twenty-four to fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-eight, or thirty-six percent of what was budgeted for the year.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Make a motion to accept the July twenty twenty-three through October twenty twenty-three financial reports?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty-three through October twenty twenty-three financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have regular business. First thing is the Public Safety Building Committee. So Jesse, you drew up some, um, bylaws for us?
Yep, so these are just, um, leveled out to the same bylaws as most of your other committees. Um, you'll see under section five, committee composition includes the seven members you discussed at your previous meeting. Um, two with Tremont Fire, one self-estar with Tremont Ambulance Representative, one select board member, one county board member, and two members of the general public, Tremont residents.
So, good to meet.
Yeah, me too.
Once, um, once this is approved, we'll host the Public Safety building.
Yep.
I'd probably start wanting to keep it on your second December, I guess.
I motion to establish the Public Safety Building Committee and to adopt and sign the Public Safety Building Committee bylaws.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to establish the Public Safety Building Committee and to adopt and sign the Public Safety Building Committee bylaws. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have law enforcement contract. I'll let you explain that first, Jesse, you're the one who spoke with Hancock County.
Yep, so our current contract expires December thirty-first of this year. Um, I reached out to Scott to see if they wanted to prepare a one-year contract, which is what the board has previously done. Um, the last contract is just ending, it was a three-year, um, which was approved at town meeting. Um, I asked additionally if you wanted to send a six-month, um, and then you could put law enforcement on town meetings as a warrant. Um, and so that's what he sent, was the six-month, so it was wait until June thirtieth, which would take us to the new fiscal year for whatever is passed that you can get down for coverage.
What are we paying now per hour?
I did seventy-two on what it is.
Same rate?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The only thing I would mention is that if we do, um, I, I agree, this is the best way to do it. That way, if it's a three-year contract, you don't have to keep doing it every year. That was a pain, what we used to do every year. This will get us sort of the spring. Um, the only thing is if it goes to voters and they turn it down for some reason, should we have an option B or just wait until we get to that point? I just, I'm worried if we...
I think...
Have anything, right?
Yeah, that's what I mean, what if, what if you...
So Hancock County, um, has to provide your nine-one-one coverage. Um, this is for patrol coverage, so if they chose not to for some reason, either they chose not to renew or if the voters chose not to accept it, um, you'd still have emergency coverage by Hancock County, um, or if you get a proposal from another agency. Um, right now, we've... They've, um, their coverage has dropped a little due to their issue, um, that happened from the event in October. Um, I don't know, they've mentioned that the state police is changing its coverage effective in January. Um, last time I talked to one of the deputies, he wasn't sure if that was a hundred percent going away as the state police would like it to or not. County commissioners are still working on that, um, but I don't know what their coverage would be if the state police goes away. We do have a lot of our calls covered by state police, um, and when Hancock's not on the contract, but...
No, I'm just afraid if you set it up like this, then, um, if the voters turn it down, because, you know, we've all heard both sides of it. But if the voters turn it down, it could take six months for us to get an agreement with someone else to, um, to provide services, agree on money and all this stuff, well...
Right.
I know someone will respond to nine-one-ones, but you don't wanna have, um, in the optimum time of the ye-, you know, the peak season of the year, here in July, August, September, um, with no police coverage, that's all.
I guess the, the main thing for... Timing-wise, I mean, whatever... If you're contracting with anybody other than Hancock County at any point, it's going to be more money than this contract.
Yeah.
So if that's something the town wants to do, it's best to do it during the budget town meeting process. Because if they, you just do Hancock County and they turn down Hancock County, and then you need to get one from someone else, you're not gonna have the funds for the someone else. You need to know that at town meeting, what that is, but...
Yeah, and that doesn't, I'm not saying that is, this doesn't affect, um, like voting today. Obviously, we wanna do the six-month contract, I'm just thinking out that you wanna make sure we set this, or we think it out thoroughly, so we don't end up getting bit on, on it. And like you just said, I never even thought of that, but if you didn't have money to pay, you'd only budget it, you know, just say a hundred fifty thousand, you have to pay two hundred, then...
The bottom line is the, the select board can contract with whomever the select board makes a motion to contract with, provided that the legislative body has authorized the expenditure. So if they've only authorized you a hundred and seventy, then you can't contract with anybody for three hundred. But you can choose whomever it is, as long as you have the funds to pay for it. They don't have to authorize who it is, but they have to authorize how to...
So if they turn down the contract, we're free, to still work out something and hire someone else?
You just have to have the money, but...
Yeah.
You still would be, even though if you, I can't see that as being two separate things on... So if you, if you're, I'm just thinking of like an article, if it says that you wanna contract with Hancock County for X amount of a hundred fifty thousand for three years a year, uh, three years, a hundred fifty thousand per year, and the voters vote no on it, then how are we gonna take that? Because then that money won't be available.
Right, so the way it's been done in the past, the law enforcement funding is included in Article usually nineteen, under protections. Last, the last time this was voted on, it actually, the way it was done in twenty, just before I got here, confused the auditors, because the separate article for law enforcement's also stated the amount. So then the auditors thought we had double approved it, that that second article was just stating the amount, so it wasn't authorized on the other one. Um, but I'll ask the auditors, what's the best way to word it? Can you do, should you or can you do both in one article?
Might be better not to.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
Well, something that we should think about down, you know, as we're going through the process, that's all.
Yep.
Motion to approve and sign the January first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four law enforcement contract with Hancock County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the January first, twenty twenty-four through January thirtieth, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, law enforcement contract with Hancock County Sheriff's Department Office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, and if you would, Jesse, just check on that, that way we know before, just thinking about it.
Yeah.
Um, next we have the senior property tax rebate program.
So this one is, um, from your September eighteenth meeting, you discussed creating, um, senior property tax rebate program for Tremont, um, based off the one I showed you from Town Cumberland. I have drafted up, taking stuff from that, drafted up a, um, ordinance to establish the program for you to look at. Um, additionally, I've drafted up the associated worksheets and, um, applications that would go along with the program. As I remind here, um, this would, if you're, if you're in agreement with it and want to proceed, you would send this to town meeting, um, online to the voters to choose whether or not to adopt the ordinance and approve the funding to pay for the program as part of FY twenty-five budget. Um, one thing I just pointed out in the memo, that I just wanted your opinion on was the age, um, we previously discussed the age of seventy, which is what you're gonna spell it in the tone. Um, I just wanted to point out that the states that everybody is upset with that ended was sixty-five. So if you do seventy, you are gonna cut out a fair amount of a hundred warrants that are upset with this stage program, but... So I just wanted you to think about it.
Or could be nothing.
Could be nothing.
Yeah.
So I just wanted you to make the decision. Have the information to make the decision.
How'd you land on the ninety-one thousand?
That was, yeah, that was just, um, what the advocate was spouting in them. So you can change it to whatever amount.
Like Eric was saying, I think we're doing, I think we're going above and beyond with this, and I think that seventy is, um, is good in my opinion. I think we're, at least our target was low-income, um, people who really, you know, this would make a huge difference still.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't even mind upping the amount of money, um, if it was on the lower end of the income scale there. But the ninety, I don't, I'm not sure if that's a bit high. I don't know what anybody else thinks about it.
You can leave it at the sixty, I mean, if you look at the worksheet, it's broken into sixty and above.
Yep.
Um, and that ordinance sixty to ninety-one, caps it, so there's nothing above ninety-one. It's completely up to you.
Yeah.
I, I think the seventy's a good idea on the age, anyway. And, and, I don't, you know, God, it doesn't make any difference to me. It's only a hundred bucks if you're over sixty thousand, anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, there's, people that are over the age of seventy have an combined income of sixty to ninety-one thousand, is probably not likely to see anyways. I mean, maybe, but, you know, probably most people are gonna fall into the lower.
Those are the ones we're shooting for, for sure.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, um, like the thirty to forty and the thirty under is more where I was focusing on.
Yeah.
You know, that would be good to see the most benefit, get, get in that area.
But I don't mind leaving it how it is, just because, I mean, if they're working that hard and they're seventy-five years old, they should get a little something off of it.
Yeah. I guess my good feeling is why not try it like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, looking to it, if it doesn't seem to work, or we don't see a lot of people in that bracket or something.
Yep. Yeah, Scott?
Yeah, looks good, Jesse. Uh, I make a motion to request the town manager to include the senior property tax rebate in the draft fiscal year twenty-five budget to replace the senior property tax rebate program on the warrant for the twenty twenty-four annual town, did I say replace? Uh, annual town meeting in May, if I said replace, I meant place.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to request the town manager include the senior property tax rebate in the draft of the FY twenty-five budget and to place the senior property tax rebate program on the warrant for the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting in May. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have ferry terminal float replacement. Anybody take that one?
I, if you wanna take a crack at it.
Okay. Um, so the Harbor Committee feels that the, uh, floats need to be replaced down at the, um, ferry terminal dock. They have an estimate of around sixty thousand dollars to do the job, and the MDOT has set aside funds of thirty thousand for a fifty-fifty matching grant, and that would leave us, uh, the town of Tremont paying thirty thousand. They came up with the idea of maybe reaching out to Swans Island and Frenchboro to request, or not request, but to ask for any financial, um, contribution that they could do, because there, as you know, Eric, very, very few amount of people, um, residents in Tremont that, that use that. It's primarily the outer islands.
Yeah, the only thing I saw was, I don't know how they would like it if we only give them a year off of the rent if they're paying for essentially five years, right?
Yeah.
So I was wondering if maybe we should give them the five years, if they, that might be more appealing.
Yeah, and that's what, I looked at it afterwards, and I'm thinking, you know, trying to think how they're, how they're gonna, their thought process is gonna work with us, and it seems like that if they are giving consistently a couple thousand dollars a year to the town, um, that would, I would think that that would include maintaining the chains, maintaining the floats, when the floats come up and need to be replaced, that's kind of included in that.
Right, they've been paying rent.
A year. Um, but that has not always been the case, you can ask your father. They had not paid for a lot of years.
Right.
Um, so I think that one way to, to, besides reaching out and saying, hey, can you, can you cough up ten thousand dollars apiece? Is maybe, what if they went up on the amount? They would like to receive, um, the town of Tremont would like to receive three thousand dollars a year, because we had to replace the floats, yada, 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 it costs so much money. Um, just up the amount per year, and, I mean, those floats have probably been there for twenty-five years, I bet. They're old, those are, so they should more than keep up with the maintenance. And, uh, do you have like a, uh, expenditures for just that float system, or?
No, I, I mean, we could figure it out, it just goes under, um, proper payers, but, um, I think the concern the Harbor Committee had was with the large cost of thirty thousand, if you take, even if you did three thousand apiece, but then you take out the routine work, it's gonna take a lot of years to come up with thirty.
Yeah.
Uh huh. How much does it cost every year to haul them out and launch them?
We have to haul them out, we have to set the ramp, um...
I think Justin said they were five hundred each way, Chalmers was, or close to it, four, fifteen.
For both of them?
For each.
Yeah, I was gonna say fifteen hundred for the floats, so that's three grand a year.
Yeah.
Right.
And then another...
Fifteen hundred?
I think.
Well, five hundred each, you just said, right?
Just, oh, just three?
Just three, yeah.
So fifteen hundred, so three grand there, and then probably another fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Yep.
So four, five hundred bucks probably a year.
So the two thousand dollars doesn't cover enough for both of them?
Right.
And then you...
That's not any maintenance on the floats, that's just hauling them and launching them.
Well, no, like, two, two, two grand or so for maintenance and stuff, is kind of what I was thinking too, like, four fifteen hundred a year.
But if you hang on, Eric, if you do three thousand a year, just to haul in the moncho. And then the barge fee is gonna be, what, five hundred dollars to do the ramp each time?
Not even that, it's two seventy-nine.
Two thousand.
Okay, each time though.
Yeah.
Twice a year, so let's just say three hundred, so six hundred. And then chains are every two years.
Three, yeah.
Yeah, three years, and what's a perm warrant chain rough, I know?
I don't remember what the last bill was for all the chains. Probably like two grand or...
Yeah, they're like seven hundred a warrant, I think. Yeah. So there's how many, two warrants plus two tag chains?
Four warrants.
It's four. So I'm gonna say twenty-eight hundred dollars every two, every three years. Right?
Yeah.
So you're almost a thousand dollars a year.
Which they might, I bet those chains are older than that, at more than three years, they could drop all the way down too.
Okay. Even if you did it by four?
Yeah.
Um, you get seven hundred a year for the chains, and that's not including, do we paint the floats or anything?
He scraped some of her places boards, bearing.
He used to pay kids around town to paint them, that doesn't happen.
I know a guy that'll work for two hours.
So you're at, you're at forty-three hundred dollars, just chains, um, the truck fee, the barge fee, and that's not including the little floats.
Right, but that's not your annual, that's with chains and stuff, that's a...
No, no, that's the annual, that's divided.
Yeah, he divided it up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's your annual cost, is forty-three hundred dollars, just to launch them and maintain them, so, um...
So we're getting half of that?
Yeah, not even half, right?
Or is it two thousand from Frenchboro and two thousand from...
Yes, two thousand each.
Yes, two thousand.
That's two thousand each, okay.
Yeah.
So it's almost paying for it.
Yep.
If you don't figure anywhere in there on the floats, that's just a...
Well, we had some money in there for regular maintenance.
Well, the, the, the chains and stuff.
Yeah, thirty. No, the floats, fifteen hundred bucks you put in there.
I have to get on my calculator and mess with it.
Okay, I know, you included that, okay.
You get thirty thousand dollars worth of floats, and we're getting a grant with that, so you might not get it next time either. If they lasted twenty years, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year, if they did last that long.
It's a thousand eighty-five, put the amount in a thousand eighty-five to take them out.
Okay, so it's a little less on that, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was about three hundred bucks a float usually.
Thousand eighty, you said?
So the two thousand's not unreasonable, it's not super cheap, it's...
It's almost twenty, yeah.
So I think the committee's thought was that what they're paying covers the annual cost of them, that there's not anything left over to save thirty grand to replace them. And that's replacing two of them, and apparently eleven, so it's not replacing all of them, um... They talked about, the Harbor Committee talked about having the town of Tremont pay for them and then letting Swans and Frenchboro pay us back, you know, four thousand next year, four thousand, you know, whatever. Um, but I was just reminded of that, there's, they're gonna be basically in deficit in the Harbor Fund if they pay for them. If we pay the thirty, the Harbor Fund will be negative until it's reimbursed, which obviously...
Why not ask them for, why not ask them for any of them three years?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, two or three, maybe just extend that a little bit, make them feel a little bit better.
You guys don't think that upping the fee, as in, you know, more is a rent every year, and then just taking this, and just doing the math on it here, if you're, so that's thirty-five hundred, that's lower than what we originally said, with the trucking fee, the way it is, everything's gonna go up though, every year, as you know. But, um, so it's just covering, you know, the two thousand apiece is just covering the maintenance. And then if you had fifteen hundred dollars a year in addition to that, then that would chip away into thirty thousand for twenty years.
We're gonna get the extra money though, for the war fund, is what he was saying. If we pay out the thirty now, then we're negative in the war fund, we'd have to do something there.
Right, the Harbor has twenty-something, twenty thousand right now. But I'm just thinking, uh, if we took the money, or you'd have to go to vote to take out, move the money from somewhere else. Yeah, if we brought it to voters, they took the money from wherever they needed to, and then just charged them... And then just charged them Swans Island and Frenchboro X amount a year. And like, so it was set in stone, like you have to pay this much per year to use the float because they, they use them. And then it would, I mean, that, that thirty thousand would be paid back over time.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me really either way.
How about, you know, same thing, maybe asking him and saying, in three years, the rate's gonna increase. You know, if you help us cover the cost of replacing them in three years, you know, we'll start charging annual fees again and it will be higher. So you know, this, it's not keeping up with what it's costing us to.
Yeah, well, the maintenance fee is gonna be a lot less for a while now, too, so.
Well, you're still gonna have all the hauling and launching of the chains, you can have all of that.
Yeah, we're not even figuring out float maintenance, so it's gonna be the same actually.
Yeah.
So either way, it's gonna, if you don't, if you take the ten thousand now, say you get rent free for three years. Then you're gonna, the town's gonna have to cough up four thousand a year just to have the, them hauled and the chains done.
Right.
So it's kind of a toss up. Um, yeah, cause if you did five thousand, that's still, I mean, the thirty five hundred plus. Um, if it was five thousand between the pair of them, that's still just chipping away at it. It would almost be better to have, I mean, they should be able to have no issue with like three thousand a year. That's only up a thousand dollars and those floats are there.
Pretty vulnerable.
I know, yeah.
I keep thinking what it costs me to tie up somewhere.
Yeah, why not?
It's a lot more than that.
Thank you.
It's an interesting situation in the fact that they're. Located on the state's property. So we don't know where they are. But the, the best I could get out of the D O T was because it's our harbor. We're the ones they let put the floats there.
We're coming off state's property, but the water sits in, it's not the state's.
Right.
Yeah.
So, cause I had asked, you know, is there a reason the state doesn't just lease it to them? There is no official lease, but is there a reason it's not to Swans and Frenchboro since it's the Swans Island Ferry Terminal with state? And he just said, well, essentially because it's indoor water, you can lease it indoor if you want, but the state just hasn't allowed it to us.
So if you run up a thousand on each, that'd be six thousand a year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and that would be the bare minimum, I mean, that would, that would cover some cost. You're putting away seventeen, eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars a year roughly towards a float.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Plus you're covering all the rest.
Twenty years, that's paying for the float over the twenty years. At most part.
But that's what, if they, I would structure it as like a rent, so they have to pay it. They don't pay it, they don't use it, that's, you know, cause it's in the past, I know. It's been good the last four or five years, but before that, there was not much coming in for quite some time.
It's considered for whatever purpose, it's considered a donation at this point, carrying your contribution.
Well, I was just thinking, I've considered putting a dinghy down there and I'm gonna have to pay dinghy fee if I tie it up down there.
Yeah.
And I'm a resident of the town where it is.
Yeah.
You know, so. I, I, I think, yeah, just maybe make it a fee.
I think it's very reasonable.
I do too.
Sounds good. Find some money, Jesse.
Jesse, poor Jesse, but do you wanna run this by the harbor committee first, just to?
Um, yeah, I can.
It's up to you, but I mean, just to keep them in the loop of it.
Your only, your, your other issue just to consider. Is if, if wherever you're finding the money is something that you have to ask the taxpayers for. You've never asked them for harbor money before.
Especially for another town. I mean, it, the harbor committee was pretty set on doing it this way or?
Yes, um.
I mean, that works as well, I guess.
I remind them it's ultimately up to you, that's a choice call. When we discuss it.
Well, it's, I mean, if, if those two towns would be willing to give that, that would be great, but I just, I don't see it happening. That's my sense of it, but.
I guess that was ultimately what the harbor committee ended up with was, the money's what I ask and if not, then I need to increase.
Give them the two options.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
So we either wanna, we need some help paying for these floats that you guys use and we would either like to do it this way or raise the rate of how it costs a year.
And I, I think, you know, I tell them it's gonna get raised in a few years anyway if they come up with a ten.
Well, we can worry about that later.
I think I'd be upfront about it.
We will be, a couple of years.
Yeah, I do, I do business with you sometimes, huh?
You gotta bait them in first.
And make sure to note that it would be more like a fee, not a donation, so it's not an option plan to not do it for three, four years, that's all.
Yep.
That's probably a good idea, Eric, just let them, send it to them, say which way would you rather? Kind of one wants one way and one wants the other way, isn't good enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't wanna pay, we just won't put them in next year.
Yeah.
Really? Won't build the ones.
Right.
Tremont residents only.
No, they definitely need that, they definitely need that dog because this running kids to high school and sports and everything else, I mean, that's what it's for, so.
Yeah.
Let's try to work with them.
Yep. I'm sure there won't be an issue one way or the other, we'll work it out.
I motion to authorize a town manager to draft letters to Swans Island, Frenchboro requesting a financial contribution of ten thousand each. To the ferry terminal float replacement or. Due of annual fee of three thousand each.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize a town manager to draft letters to Swans Island and Frenchboro requesting a financial contribution of ten thousand dollars each. To the ferry terminal float replacement or three thousand dollars per year as a fee for each town going forward. Is there any discussion? All those, whoops, you guys don't?
I just wanted to know, I don't need to hit the motion, but were you fine leaving the two thousand dollar fees that paid with him for the next fiscal year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the one year, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and like. For one year, Eric, or was it for, well, whatever you guys think that, what did the harbor committee say?
Well, two.
Harbor committee just discussed one, but.
Okay, yeah, cause, I mean, if you give them multiple years, I guess, then it's not helping us with the float.
Yep. Yep.
And we need the help with the float, that's why we're asking them, so.
Yep, okay. Alright, all those in favor? Alright, next we have the wharf garage lease. We have a lease once again, same company, D N R B, same amount.
Uh, yes, the change to this is, um, they normally sign the lease in April, um, for one year, locking them in for the year. They were unsure and uncertain if they wanted to be locked in for a year, so they did not sign the lease in April. They continued paying monthly and expressed that they would be interested in signing the lease if it was just a month to month deal. The odds are there's due requires that you have a legal agreement, regardless of if it's month to month or a year. So I went ahead and drafted it, um, cause Justin took it somewhere, anyways, so they signed it month to month and it's just up to you.
Makes sense to me.
Motion to authorize the town manager to renew the wharf garage lease with D N R B as a month to month lease at a rent. At a rate of one thousand per month.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to renew the wharf garage lease with D N R B as a month to month lease at a rent of one thousand dollars per month. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have administrative official appointments. We have a harbor master.
Yes, so the harbor, um, harbor master interview committee and I have selected Spencer Giannato. As the next harbor master, Spencer lives in Trenton and has been a work manager in Stone. And he's scheduled to be working under twenty.
Can he get here by eight o'clock in the morning?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe he'll be here at seven o'clock.
So he's good?
Yeah, he's just gonna make a motion if we're good.
Okay, I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Spencer Giannato as harbor master. Is there any discussion?
All those in favor? Alright, next we have holiday tree lighting.
So this is on your agenda, we've had some requests and suggestions, um, over the past couple of years. Related to Tremont having a holiday tree lighting, um, similar to the one that takes place every December in Southwest Harbor. The one over there is coordinated with Harbor House and the Pembentick P T O and the town provides, um, the location, the tree and lighting of the tree. And fire trucks for the event. I reached out to Tremont P T O to inquire if they'd be interested in participating in an event if there was to be one. P T O has indicated they are interested and there was also recommendations of having, um, a lobster trap tree instead of a regular Christmas tree. There's, um, according to the P T O, there's interest from the fire department, um, a member or two that were at the meeting in assisting with that. So I told them I placed it on your agenda to see if you approved of the town participating, providing location, tree, light, whatever. You want to provide for such an event.
Where are you gonna do it?
It's up to you.
Be nice to have it around the town office, but I can't think of a spot where everybody could see it driving by.
Be nice to do it at the school.
Down there, you know, that's both the only place I could think of.
The Derek parking lot maybe in the school?
Yeah.
I was thinking, yeah, um, I mean, you might, there might be space to do it right in front of the community building as you drive by.
Oh, yeah.
Where our banner is right now.
If it wasn't too big a tree.
So.
If you do a trap tree, they take up a fair amount of room, but they do look nice and you can.
I mean, you could, I, I would think you could, um. Side walkers through that part.
Yeah.
Be a good spot for it, but if it would fit. You could put it right against the.
You could put it against it, they took all those trees out.
Be half as many traps too.
That's true.
I don't know, I don't know if I can agree with you guys on the trap tree.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know if I can agree with you guys on the trap tree. I think they look good when they put them, I've seen them, there's enough traps out here in this area, start pitching those up.
Yeah, give all the kids a tennis shot.
Yeah. No, you'll have plenty of people that will give, you know, that will let them use traps, that's for sure. It's just work though.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, build one.
What color traps we're gonna use though?
Yeah, I know. All different colors, that's the point, yeah.
I asked, um, I did ask Justin about the wharf location. And he said he wasn't. He didn't love the idea of it being potentially in the way or any potential hazards of lighting it. The actual event taking place in the dark on the wharf.
I think you could use the wharf house as a base for it, just. Good one. It'd keep people from breaking into it.
The only spot I could think of down there would be up where the, the first, I don't know what parking lot you call it now, but. The first parking lot going up the hill, the dirt one, if you did it in there, then it would be out of the way and you could see it over the harbor, but nothing like. Be nice if people could see it coming in back and forth from the school.
It's gotta be somewhere, it's gotta be somewhere close with its power.
Yeah, exactly, and I don't know where else, I'm trying to think of a spot where there's a decent tree where you could just do that versus a trap tree.
Last time I saw a town tree, it was on your parents' property.
Was it?
Yeah, we did that one year, that's a few years back.
Yep. Yeah, I'm trying to think of where there's one centrally right here that would work for a. I don't know, besides them telephone poles, yeah, we'd probably use a couple of those.
Did you do it on?
They wouldn't mind if we strung some lights out.
Branches on them, yes. Drill some holes, put some branches in them.
What if we tried, uh, like on the lawn next to the marsh, next to the gym, right in there, behind that tree?
Yeah, that might work.
Cause there's some room there and pretty close to power, you'd have to run cords across, but.
I know, I can see plowing, they're gonna have a fit about power cords. I think that's a good idea, having it right on the end of the building, cause there's no, I was trying to think of any ways else that would. That probably is the best spot really, make fit what you can.
Put two small ones in.
Yeah, I mean, really, if you got it, whatever, it's, it's off the counter, Eric.
Yep. I motion to have the town assist with the holiday tree lighting event.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to have the town assist with the holiday tree lighting event. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have, um, the assessors contract. You can see the increase in here, very minimal, I'm surprised at that honestly, with the, the prices of labor and everything else that have gone up.
So it's, um, same appraisal company, the Riff, and the Benriff, I think, just finishing our sixth year with them. Everybody at the town office is very happy with the assessment.
Seems to be very professional. I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a contract with R J D appraisal for assessing services. From October first, twenty twenty three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to sign a contract with R J D appraisal. For assessing services from October first, twenty twenty three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next is the select board schedule.
So in here, it's the draft twenty twenty four, quick word schedule. Just a couple of dates as usual to point out, um, we always mention February twentieth, school vacation week. Just to make sure they have a quorum of new planning to be here on the school vacation week. March eleventh to twenty fifth. Um, March eleventh and twenty-fifth, there are special meetings to consider the budget, annual town meeting warrant, so as usual, every Monday in March. Um, town election and town meeting, intended to be scheduled for the usual second week in May, um, this year. Something later, it was the same second week, it shifts to the calendar to May thirteenth and fourteenth. And then August twelfth, um, this past year, you had one meeting in July and one in August, um, but for now, it's just scheduled, um, your usual two in July and one in August, unless you, the others.
Well, it's good to make.
Yeah.
Add in anything if we need it.
Yeah.
I probably won't be here for vacation week, but, I don't know, but I don't know what everyone else is doing.
Probably won't be here till the February fifth one, cause same thing, I think we're going the last, into the first week of February.
I motion, oh, wrong page. Motion to adopt the schedule for the select board's two thousand twenty-four meetings as proposed.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adopt the schedule for the select board's twenty twenty-four meetings as proposed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, we have the FY twenty-five, um, budget practice, the third party donations application.
So application is the same, um, format. As usual, updated the dates, um, applications go back, no later than Monday, September eleven. Um, we've got our second meeting agenda, um, same layout as usual, um, in your memo. I've listed who received the funding in FY twenty-four, and who's received it in recent years, but not in FY twenty-four. Um, I will send, um, application to those four organizations.
I motion to approve the FY twenty-five grant application form for nonprofit organizations.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the FY twenty-five grant application form for nonprofit organizations. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have the FY twenty-five, uh, budget prep as the budget calendar.
So in your packet, it's the proposed calendar, um, for reviewing the budget, um, same layout as always.
I motion to adopt the, oh, yeah, no, I motion to adopt the FY twenty-five budget preparation schedule as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the FY twenty-five budget preparation schedule as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, we have budget encumbrance.
Uh, so this is just, um, related to the Dix Point Road construction that has spanned over a couple fiscal years now. So, uh, there's, there was a remaining invoice that's coming in for the completion of that, so we need to, um, encumber the remaining months for the project that is in FY twenty-three, which is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four, and then, um, a motion to use up to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents from the road improvement reserve for the completion of that project. And if you can just change your motion on that second one to up to sixty-four. Recently, got information that maybe a bit less.
I motion to encumber twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four from the FY twenty-three summer roads Dix Point budget line to the FY twenty-four summer roads Dix point budget line. Additionally, I'd like to motion to use up to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents from the road improvement reserve for Dix Point Road project.
Second.
Is that okay to have both in one, Jesse?
Yes.
Yep, go.
Not an issue.
Yep, it's been moved and seconded to encumber twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars from the FY twenty-three summer roads Dix point budget line to the FY twenty-four summer roads Dix point budget line, and additionally, to use up to sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents from the road improvement reserve for the Dix Road project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, we have surplus property.
So at your September eighteenth meeting, you offer as a surplus property is the sale of leftover Wharf filings during the second, third parking lot at the Wharf. Um, we just received one bid for filings from Justin Seavey in the amount of a hundred dollars.
I make a motion to award the bid for the leftover filings to Justin Seavey in the amount of one hundred dollars.
Second. Been moved and seconded to award the bid, uh, for the leftover filings to Justin Seavey in the amount of one hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? We're gonna let him off the hook that easy, for him being the only bidder?
He said you should pay.
I was gonna knock it down to one dollar.
He said you should pay.
Yeah.
I almost said one dollar.
Yeah. All those in favor? All right, next, we have, um, electing municipal review committee board of directors. We have three seats, five candidates, I believe.
You, you vote for just one?
Yeah.
Howdy, he's gonna make the decision.
There you go.
Well, I make a motion to vote on, uh, Melissa Doan. For the MIC board of directors.
Second. Been moved and seconded to vote for Melissa Doan for the MIC board of directors. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, town managers report.
All right. Over the last several weeks, I submitted the grant for the Department of Energy, which you guys discussed, um, for the town of this building, for the Inseab, um, we'll find out the results of that, um, grant sometime in March or eventually. Um, worked on the select board calendar, worked on the senior tax assistant program, uh, did the town harbor master hiring. Worked on the harbor committee financials and attended the harbor committee meeting, attended the planning board meeting, attended the league of towns meeting. Prepared the safety building bylaws, committee bylaws, filed the monthly G report, um, worked with the auditors when they were here, um, on the FY twenty-three audit, they'll be back this Thursday, um, to complete their field work for the town. Uh, helped, um, the clerk set up and take down the election, assisted with foreclosure notices, uh, meeting prep and financial reports. Office staff, um, the clerk was, um, busy with her B and V reports, um, also Sarah was notified by, um, the state that she is no longer on probationary status with B and V, she's a permanent municipal agent, which is.
Good job, Sarah.
Our probation.
Um, she attended tax collector training, some B and V training, processed lien discharges, um, successfully conducted her first election. Assisted with the FY twenty-three audit, sent out FY twenty-two foreclosure notices, and the bookkeeper was busy as well with the FY twenty-three audit. Assisting the auditors. Public Works, um, greased truck three in the case, worked on truck two, uh, did some ditching on Clark Point Road, replacing a driveway, um, pipe on Clark Point. Replaced the stolen stop sign on Carter Road, uh, went to Bangor Truck for plow steel, attended the DOT training in Bangor. Truck nine was picked up from Bangor, truck one was picked up from Elsberg, um, plow and wing put on truck one. Swapped out summer and winter tires on trucks three and nine in the Bobcat, mowed the library, assisted with, uh, new desk and some chairs at the town office. Hatched in cross pipes on Clark Point, continued repairs on truck nine sander, cleaned up, uh, Cape Road, moved floats with the harbor master. Uh, put the message board away for the winter, and put the sander in truck three. The harbor master replaced the electric hoist, um, attended harbor master interviews, um, the electric hoist then had a failure and broke. He figured out what was wrong with that, ordered the parts and replaced that, um, prepared the harbor committee agenda. Picked, uh, cleaned up the dock, uh, did the harbor committee packet, and attended the harbor committee meeting. Took the boat out for a ride, um, pumped it out, it was, had not been left on automatic, so there's some water in it. Spoke with a resident about a morning transfer, did the check of seal cove, hauled out the transient floats, replaced a GFI outlet on the dock. Winterized the dock, freshened up paint on the load limits, and cleaned up broken trash and did an EDS run. Over the next few weeks, I will be bringing the har, new harbor master on board and doing FY twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
Motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, December fourth, November twenty-three, at five P M at town.
Second. Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, at five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion with Jared?
Second.
All those in favor? Not bad, that's a long list, just have to get through it.
One of those shirts up there, maybe missing a button, I don't know if the bird looked good.
Okay.
He had something in his mouth.